...in your order, uh, we do have the form, so we'll receive if you would rise.
My congratulations, we're the light of the United States of America and into the Republic of which the states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing while we break for you. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this night that we can come together and make thoughtful and wise little decisions for our city. Uh, please be with us tonight as we, um, muddle through some things and try to decide what is best for our town. In your holy name, amen.
Amen. Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight is the continued saga of the trash here in the yard pickup. Uh, tonight we've got representative from Rumpie, which is Drew Washington. Did I see somebody else back there?
I'm Kenny Hill, commercial manager.
Uh, final counsel, that's their questions, uh, about the Rumpie. They wanted me to clarify before they proceeded. Okay. Let them ask their questions.
Uh, just wanted to give like an overview of what the bid was, so we can kind of understand what it actually is.
Yeah, the bid was for, it's all inclusive trash, which means it'll be exactly how it is now. It's everything is set up like for any reason, you know, whole house or something like that with wood and it, the rate will be business for $1.50 per month. Now, the city, I assume will have some sort of administrative cost to that, but that break is firm for three years, effective whatever the first day of pay to repeat. So, you know, it's December 1st, that would begin the three year period, but I agree. Pretty standard. It's like I said, it's exactly, we bid for the same service that the city currently providing, we didn't make cards on paper or anything like that, so.
Another question I had, uh, is that the same rate that would apply to the city state ordinance and you want to do that?
Well, if we did direct billing, there would be additional costs to it because we would, you know, ultimately we would incur bad debt through the process. We don't have the means of cutting utilities off like you guys would. If somebody were to stop paying their trash bill, we would just stop collecting and, you know, it would be based on how we would collect that money when we could begin servicing them again, so.
Do you have an idea of how much more it would cost?
For us to do that, I mean, we'd have to go back and look at it. Probably it would have to be re-bid it again, so just to factor all everything back into it.
Okay, so you're saying that you would not pick up trash if somebody did not pay their bill?
To us, yes. That's what it means. We had to collect money from this continued service. If we just kept collecting and they weren't paying us, it would be out of center for us, I guess.
But they would not be paying directly. I think that's been a misconception that's been out there on media and whatever, is that you would be direct billing the consumer and that's not what the bid says, correct? As far as residential, but commercial, you would and that's exactly what the bid says. My question is, um, like with issues, would those still funnel through the city?
You could do it your way.
Or, okay, because then that's our administration having to deal with issues and then doing it to you.
Yeah, sorry. Normally we ask if they just call our customer service, correct? But some cities they like to say, and that way it was the issue that.
Right. When I talked to one city today, they sort of told me that that's the way they do it with their, um, garbage collector that they have in their city. Um, one thing is, like, how much would the city be billed for our garbage collection, such as, like here, how much do you think we would have to have per week in order for our garbage just within the city, the maintenance barn, sewer, water?
We have a dumpster, our place, we have, you know, a dumpster at the police station.
Okay. So that's a cost that we haven't had in the bid either. I know in some cases, I know, in one city I talked with today, that that was included in the bid.
It's, oh, yeah, it's included in yours as well, city.
Because it doesn't say that.
Yeah.
It's not included in the bid, so.
Yeah, this was a pretty standard bid. I know Will Brandon saw how like, you know, Coldstream was recently, theirs was a little bit more detailed, so had things broke out in the bid.
All right, because this just basically states that the citizens would, the wealth, a-actually it would be $12.50 per unit, we would still do the billing, so we would be incurring that cost. And if someone didn't pay, that would be a cost to us, but then we would still owe for that service for that person, correct?
Correct.
But we would incur that cost whether they paid or not, whether than you want. So that's a, that's a question to sort of ponder also. Um, what about charges for like special events pickups?
Like for roll off or just say?
Um, let's say we have like the art walk. Um, they have several containers throughout the night. We always collect them and that's something that the city does, we, we just do it. Um, like what would you charge for special events, just to host like a small dumpster or two, or even the garbage park or minutes? Because I mean, that's something that we're gonna have to tell people when they come in.
Usually they, they fall online with the city facilities and they give a charge. I know with a lot of cities we donate to corporate or something, for, for, about here, and they'll actually just send them on a regular route, probably a guy who'll pick them up as he's servicing around, so. Usually things like that, yeah.
A lot of history is in there.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of.
And then, uh, we, we clarified the billing procedure. That was one misconception that was out there that I read. Um, now, will you be billing us directly, or will we have to sort of submit to you, since we have people in and out so much? I know this, in the other city I talked to today, that they have to submit monthly or weekly how many customers they have per week because of people moving in and out. And that's extra, of course, on our administration too. So how will that work? Obviously, we're gonna have to
Yeah.
tell you who's living there and who's not, so that's more work on our, on here in the office, correct?
Yeah, correct. Some cities, they just, they'll just use whatever the standard of bid number is and they just stick that. And then others, though actually every month or a quarter, but the next month, the week, yeah, the end of the month will say, okay, for November, our house count will be this amount. So I would think though, that, I mean, you guys do your utilities here on show, so it's pretty simple to have that number readily available.
Yeah, but yeah, that's another step. That's another thing that has to be done. Um, that, you know, what happens to do.
Well, we're already billing for that, so it's, 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 the expenses.
That's not our utility bill, but that's not their bill. That was my question. We would have to come up with the numbers for them to bill us in order for us to, rather than, so that's another step.
First time going around and how many house counts you have, right?
Yeah, we would do probably.
So they would write the first time they went around how many houses.
Yeah.
But that changes weekly, basically, I mean, we are the town that, that people move in and out.
I mean, you're changing it, like, all the work says they play a flat rate for X amount of houses and you won't pick up.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's what's, I mean, I've stated in there also. So that was a question I know that the one city I talked to, what they have to do each month also. And that price is not including totes, correct?
No, that would be up to, resident either use a regular car or take a buy or lease a car for months.
Like we do now from the city, it would be the same price, $3 a month, using the same tote, basically.
Yeah, that actually definitely was in the bid.
That was?
Yeah, it was.
$3 per car?
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that, because like I said, there's this misconception out there and we want to make sure we have them all clear about.
How many cities do you do in the town? Do you all cities honestly do? That county is a lot.
Pretty much the easiest way to answer that is all of them except for Fort Vostro and Lakeside Park.
Bellevue and Dayton.
Yeah, Bellevue and Dayton.
Those are the only four.
I knew Dayton was your favorite. Yeah, so four of them, yeah. Yeah, it is, yeah. And of course.
Those are also more industrialized cities. Larger cities, so your base is larger, so your price can be larger. Rather than in three years, you know, you're gonna look at our base here and it's not as, I mean, I know the one city that I talked to, I'm like, oh, we could base it off them. Well, we can't. They have over 2,000 customers. I'm like, wow, you actually have that many. They go, yeah, actually it's closer to 3,000 that, that they have us. And so we can get a rate close to that because of what we have, so, yeah. So that's a difference too.
Yeah. I may be. My question is, what size truck do you use in the city of Butler? Is it a single axle, tandem axle, squad?
We, we use tandem axle in the city of Butler.
Tandem?
Uh-huh.
And how many streets have you torn up in the city of Rock Butler with that truck?
I don't know. I lived in Butler my whole, entire childhood and, uh, the streets were pretty bad back when.
You guys aren't having that issue with other cities that have incredible streets? Someone said that you're gonna have to ruin the bridges. Do you guys want to use up bridges currently?
If we're accessing county routes, yeah, we, we are. Usually the bridges and everything are built, you know, our trucks are built. There's respect to operating, you know, the certain criteria, like most required, as you have.
The one we're concerned about, solid, that our bridges we need to tore up and thousands come out of our.
Cause that is, there was an issue with 17, correct? Yeah, Tim, you got something?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, our trucks typically weigh about 20,000 pounds less than every dump truck you see going through town. Cause they weigh about 80,000.
60,000 pounds.
80,000 pounds loaded and ours weigh about 60.
Yeah. That's an average size of the tandem truck?
They weigh 37 N.
And on these cities that you go to, that you don't pick up the garbage and you let it sit there because nobody paid the bill, what's, what's the bill to get that garbage out?
It's usually whenever they pay it, then we just pick it up.
So it just sits there?
Yeah, it sits there and the neighbors complain, yeah.
What's the percentage of jobs that they usually have this problem in a city like ours? How many times in Butler do you leave garbage to?
I bet it's less than 5%, would you say, less than that?
Way less than 5%.
Yeah, it's not very much. It's not as bad as you think. They have, you know, I shouldn't be saying this, but they had 90 days before it cut off. So if something happens, it's not like, you know, you didn't pay your bill, you're done. You know, it's 90 days and then at that point, it's like, probably.
But do you build that directly?
Yeah.
And do you recommend that for the city? It would be better to bill us so that all the utilities get picked, all the things get picked up.
Yeah, and then you won't have neighbors complain.
How much garbage does the city leave to on the curb? I've seen garbage that on the curb.
I had garbage left sitting on the curb this morning.
Yeah.
And you have it out there on time?
Yes.
You put it out last night or this morning?
Last night, all of my garbage was put out there and I had a chair left sitting in front of my house. It was broke down. So it, it was broke down, it was one of the outside plastic chairs. It was broke down, so it could have been placed in the garbage truck. Rumpie would have picked it up, so I don't understand why it was still sitting in front of my house.
It was an accident, I'm sure.
Well, then they came by a second time and it was still sitting there. It's still sitting in front of my house.
It is?
Which city did you sell?
Montjoy.
Montjoy?
Yes.
What was the address?
206.
206 Montjoy? Did you call it in at the office?
No, because this isn't the first time.
Across street from 14th down, they've been, they've been going out, they set stuff out. I don't blame them. They bound one up, that's where.
Remodeling.
Yeah, and they leave them there. Yeah, they did.
My, my thing is, is I've got to say this, and I know there's a lot of people in the office, but what I don't want to do is, I'm sorry that your chair did not get picked up, but this isn't, I, I think we do an awesome job with the garbage, but that being said, I think it should be outsourced to Rumpie so we don't have to do it. I think it's more economical, it's more feasible, but I don't want to trash talk nobody.
I don't want the cities to look trashy.
I don't think the city does look.
No, I said I don't want it to. I've seen it that way. I've seen, I've seen cities that way.
Why do you know a lot of gay don't do it like that? Do they do Butler that way? Do they do other cities that way?
I live here, I drive through here.
Yeah, my word. Well, you know, they make bags, you buy a bag, put your trash in the bag, put it in, you put it on, throw away. You line them up, your trash is hung all over the road, I'm not gonna pick it up. That's not my job. I don't spare.
Like I said, I don't want you to have to defend yourself. I'm not gonna go through that. I'm not, I'm not.
Some of the trash that we leave, we've got a few sort of bed bugs, so we do.
Exactly right. That's another thing. The employees don't have to deal with the bed bugs and the, the roaches and the nastiness that the Rumpie guys, forget it.
What we do, ask the.
So if you don't cover it up or whatever, then what do you do?
They have.
So it's up there, right?
So with that being said, it should be proud of it.
We need to keep this, uh, single discussion.
Nobody said anything about picking up the leaves and getting them out there. Is Rumpie gonna do that?
Is the bag, is it bagged?
What do you mean bagged? I can put out a whole string of leaves. He's your, he's your first. And you've got, you've got limbs that fall out of the tree and laying out to the garbage. Our people pick them up and throw them.
Yeah, if they're, if they're within, what is it, maybe four foot lengths?
Four foot lengths, bundled, less than leaves. You're gonna set up leaves, less than 50 pounds.
Yeah, there's bag.
Not weigh no bag.
I think he's talking about the leaves.
Yeah.
Is that, like, a medical, that, that, it's a back truck.
It's a vacuum. You don't do that.
No, they don't.
See that?
Well, I need to tell that to this.
That's a different thing.
That ain't hard. A lot of these people pick it up. People in the city do pick it up.
Primarily the way this works is, I assume, oh, what's the way, the current rate that the city picks up or charges a resident for trash service?
$13.
Okay, so $13. So if you were a contractor, Rumpie, and you just continued, $13, you accumulate a fund, and this is the way other cities do it, that fund you could use for anything that's considered sanitation or trash pickup, like hire and leave truck, pull them back in the streets, or if you wanted to have a citywide cleanup and just had a bunch of dumpsters, you know, you could use that fund just for that.
That fund would be less than $4,000.
That's if you get a rate to say yes.
Yes, you would have to raise your rates in order to, um, compensate for employees and the leaf.
And what's paid out of garbage?
It, 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 on average, 14,000.
You don't, you don't put the leaves on a bag and throw them out there, let them Rumpie take them. How many times do you get out and out? Like, 200 times.
You've never been on, you've never been on my street, you might put a bag what I bought. I can tell you that.
Well, it sounds like you're helping us, you're selling against $4,000. I have, I have five years of reports submitted from you right now, all of which show negative. So if Ray were to stop at that?
How, how do you have a negative? Because from just, just the one that I have shown a negative.
I'll explain to you. I have fiscal year 15, this dumpster city hall is put off by Susan and confirmed by Chris. So we brought in 198,000 and then total spends of the year is 192,000. So it appears that we made $64.
And how much was put in reserves that year?
It doesn't show on here. That's the problem. You include that line item, which is you put around 19,000, it's no longer a $64 profit. It's a loss. And the same can be said for every other year. It's not included. I can show you this right now. If you all have the report that you did in the last meeting we had, you can go to page three and four. You guys have the same one where they said we're making a profit. Sheen and circle report, you said we made 1600, right? Okay, we'll go back to the first page, the very top, in the revenue section, we'll see we brought in 198,000. Right below that, you say you have literally a baked length of 1,200. Below that, you'll see transfer from other points that make it 19,610. That's correct. But then you work right to go down again, and re-add it to the revenue amount. You don't.
Because that's in your reserve.
Right, but you don't, you wouldn't include that in the total numbers, which is why you had, you had it coded differently out there.
Because it's in your reserve. You still have that money. It's showing in your garbage.
You probably counted in a different fund. You don't have that showing in your trash.
No, but if you want to know what garbage is making, then you need to know it's in your reserves.
Right, but then, okay, so.
So how do you take a negative amount from third, from a loss from money and put a negative?
You're taking it from your one fine utility and you put it in your reserve. You also had that money, you have not spent that money.
We do spend out of that fund. In the fiscal year 15, uh, 16, we spent, uh, $9,600. So again, we do include that there. It brings you further. In the 16, 17, we spent $1,800.
You did not spend your reserve transfer.
We spent.
You may have spent money from your reserve account. That's an expense.
Let me explain this. Next year, when you, when you deduct this amount, right here where it says we spent, okay, for the 16, 17 years, this again, turned off by Susan.
Terry's back here agreeing with, uh, with her. And he helped.
It was always done a lot on him. It's, it's a restricted.
The way everything does, I should excuse that. We're, we're looking forward. If you include the 16, 17 year, what they gave, and these are their numbers, that said we spent them, when they include the line item, what was spent out of it, which you should include on their expenses, because if you spent something out of it, it has included on your expense report, right?
Out of that amount. You take it out of reserve, it comes out of your reserve account.
So, so if you're not showing that you're putting it in, you're not sending a report, words are coming off.
It's shown coming in your income. You're taking 10% per ordinance, including in reserve.
That should be.
And it's a restricted fine from the, because always that dumpsters are trash.
I know, but that's not.
If you see the rates, you said that you're not saying $19,000 transfer on the line.
That is re-add, so that, it changed a lot more.
I haven't seen it, so.
Yes, it's showing the 19 coming out and then it's showing it for 10, 24 as your reserve. The city still has.
Right, but you wouldn't just say, yeah, let's take 19,000, right? You wouldn't do it like that, huh?
Chris.
I have the expense report that shows the 16, 17 years.
Does the result come from the garbage?
Okay, so the 16, 17 year, this is from then, they gave a report that includes the garbage reserve expense. So that is a line item that you can include on those reports and you should, because if you're spending money on that account, you need to, you need to count for that somewhere. So in the year we spent 11,781 last year, they bring this all the way down to negative 33,500 for the fiscal year 16, 17. This is left and void.
So how is that a profit?
It's not.
Negative 33,000 dollars. Somebody explained that.
And they split. So next year, if you bring the same report, you're gonna see an expense that has funded negative 140 dollars. So instead of your average negative 10,000 a year, 15,000 a year, next year we over reported, it's gonna be negative 100 and something thousand, or whatever we spend on this new truck. That's what we can use on the water and sewer that we need now around this land of 60.
You got a 11 year old truck that you're having to keep maintenance on, and trucks should be replaced every five years.
Well, it took us 11 years to make the money, by the way. We didn't wait 11 years.
We need to let Rumpie finish. Okay, he may need to move on. Is there any more questions for Drew?
No, I want to thank you for answering all the questions.
I have a couple. I have seen the contract. Does, in fuel charge, is that, is it fuel charge?
No, everything is billed in.
Okay, and also, I've, I've talked to some people, have we offered senior discounts in some areas?
That's in subscription areas. Usually the municipalities that we contract with, I don't know if, found those, about as many arms we contract with, they offer senior discounts.
Couple of quick questions. Uh, business accounts, do you provide to dumpsters?
Yes, we provide dumpsters.
Pick them up once a week, is that right?
It, it would be based on the frequency of the business, however they want to do it.
Now, does that build separately through the city?
No, it's not directly.
Just like, just like the story we played, we have a.
So Rumpie would directly build businesses, is that right? Are Rumpie gonna individually build the residents?
No, it's the way we bid. It's, we build villages on flat, you know.
For the residential, and you, you would direct build businesses?
Yeah.
And what's the rate on that?
It's in the bill. It's all right here, based on container size and frequency. So that's that.
You pay once a week. You get picked up once a week.
If once a week, yeah, I can, I'll check what the, the rate is on that for every week. Where's that per month?
Your month is, uh, I think I had written that, it's two, 2.90 per yard, $2.90 per yard.
And what, what yardage is that dumpster?
Yours is an eight yard.
Well, we already offered that, that's why you have.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of all private use. You need to probably, you need just about that.
So, if I'm reading this correctly, for a two cubic yard, is that what that is? The container size, two, four, six, seven, eight cubic yards, is that right?
Yeah.
One time per week pickup? Yes. Is $58?
Per month.
That's per month. What is the EOW?
Every other week.
Every other week. Not available. Okay. Correct. So it runs $58 to $99 for businesses, one time, or basically $100 to $175 two times.
Yeah, that's like I said, based on size and frequency.
And Rumpie building all of businesses directly, yeah.
So right now, business has an opportunity to sue or.
Yeah, we have ample businesses already that we have services here.
I just want to make one for the point of, well, we, this is the budget that we just passed for this year. They have budgeted 22,000 dollars each year. So we just passed a budget just a month ago, that summary, on the summary page, when you put all expenses and everything, you put all reserve, 22,000 dollars lost, and right here. We just passed it anyway through the process.
That is correct.
Uh, so we have a three yard dumpster for our businesses?
Mm-hmm.
And we charge them $51 a month. Um, and you're saying container size is two yards, four yards, six yards? Could that, how that is in the mid?
Two, four, six, eight, or seven, eight, we don't have middle places.
Okay, so you don't have a three yard, so.
No.
There was validity between two and three. And we charge them once a month, some businesses to get weekly service. Do we do our businesses weekly?
Depends what they want.
With them what?
But, yeah, most times we, someone do it three times a week.
And we charge 51 a month. And this would be 195 or 256. This is going to be for business, absolutely.
What? This is a, this is a, this is a, this is a, you guys don't, you guys don't, the city, so most businesses are written on Rumpie, that's why there are a lot of committees that go over. We go, we go, we don't go through Rumpie.
64, does it have dumpsters?
Us as a business don't go through Rumpie because it's more expensive.
64, three dumpsters.
It's not gonna hear from them.
It would be, we have, because we have to have multiple dumpsters.
He's got, he's got bills right now in his hand.
Well, I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not saying, it's not bigger than mine. I'm saying for us to have that, that load, we'd have to have multiple of what we offer, which would cost more, I'm assuming, unless you guys, if you want to dump all.
I'm just curious.
We may have raised, I mean, for threatened, we may have. Hey, Chris, out of the expense that was shown, how much of that, of the expenses, how much of that is?
how much of that was spent on trucker?
46,000.
Well, that's the first report that was done and then they went back and we separated it to show what was just on trucks. Didn't they remember just the truck number? You all had them.
30,000 in last year. Someone had 60,000 on truck. That's the last year.
The person who had one was that guy. Five is 20,000 if necessary. What? What he talks about, what he allows and takes it for? Uh, we start, is that?
That's not given till. But, but it's true. It's a trend.
How much is the reason on the other truck here?
The old truck? The old truck's at 98. No, not, probably not at a lot. But it's not our trucks we run every day. It's ours fair, so.
Yeah, to your basket.
It's a valuable truck, yeah.
Long expenses from the age of the truck. But you have to think, we didn't not buy any truck flies in there because we didn't. Here they want to, but because we didn't have the money.
We didn't have money.
Just add.
Yeah, we did have money. They chose not to do it.
I have one more question from, please. Um, recycling, i- is that an option or an availability for our people? And would it cost more?
Yes, well, for her side it would be, but we currently work with Penning County set up.
Reset.
Yeah. Reset, which I think we don't want to.
There's one in the school.
Yeah.
So they had like the little colored baskets at your?
Yeah, your house would be.
What costs? And what does that cost?
It varies, um. Brandon, what do we do on the whole square? It's 375, I think, per household.
For the?
Recycling.
For those that would, and if I wanted to.
Bills just shy of prices. I said.
If I wanted to recycle, I could have her add it or whatever. I mean, I could, I personally, I would ask you for it.
Well, they would be usually municipal recycling is in order to make it where it works, you have to, it has to be all or none. You can't do, you know, subscription, because the thing is, the first thing that people will cut when they have to start making cuts is, you know, a four dollar bill for recycling, you know, people. And you get enough people on that, you just sit there and send a guy down here to pick up, you know, 50, 60 stops. It's just, yeah.
Do you think Runkie would consider letting us be a pilot program for recycling? See, if, if anybody really wants to do it? Before we committed to it?
Maybe in a few years. I mean, right, right now, the recycling market is so volatile because of the trade war and everything. We can't even, we're having issues even actually.
You should be getting back money, huh?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we got warehouse school. You know, anybody wants supplies on us.
Are you wanting us to offer a large, large sized dumpster like we have in each school? Like we?
A couple in town to start with?
What I was talking about is some of the people, if people like, let's say I wanted it and she didn't and, you know, I just wanted to see, how many people would actually ask for it and not spend any extra money, knowing that it's an extra four dollars? I mean, we've already got the one out of the school. I mean.
Right, if you want to like locate it in town to try it.
So you're saying you put one, like on the, the city property somewhere?
Correct.
Paying if you want to recycle something.
Just see.
That's right.
And I do have one more question. And I think I went to Ashes earlier for things for a little while. Are you there? How much does Butler pay a month?
The city?
The citizens?
They're the.
The citizens pay, their residents? Eighteen, twenty-five?
We charge the city of Butler the same as what we charge Penning County.
And they charge Butler 16 something?
Yeah.
So the city of Butler residents get charged?
They, they, yeah, I, that's the thing. I only know what we charge out, that's what they charge, so she ran 16, 25.
So what are the chances in three years our contract will go to what county in Butler Hall? Can you comment on that?
You, you don't have to. So you don't have, I mean, I, I don't see it one of them that much. Because basically the way we look at it now with this, that's the case. You can send three guys, or two guys, and we could pick the whole town up in 10, 12 hours. So that's the reason why the county rate varies so much more than cities, because of the densification. I mean, it's no different than like I just mentioned with recycling. He's driving down, you know, five miles crazy, might want to be picked up for houses and, you know. Terrific?
Yes, I was a citizen where I have not seen your bid. How much is allocated for the administrative fees for the office to do anything?
That's up to the city. They charge whatever. So.
The current bid that you're looking at is us doing the billing. So we're only paying roughly 1250. But we're doing all the billing, billing that house. So we're not doing any of the administrative work. That's where the 1250 comes from.
We'll have some administrative work to buy, to buy it out for the businesses, which.
Yes.
They'll have to, they'll have to, there'll be some busy work as far as buying out businesses if they're not charged.
But as far as administrative, we would have that here.
That's where that 4,000 dollars comes.
It says we would charge someone.
13, which we normally do, we pay them 1250 per household. There's 868 households. So 50 cents per household per month is like 4,500 dollars extra that the city's getting, right, for the administrative costs of billing and administratively doing the garbage.
If you technically do a lay with the garbage, where are you going to put that on? I mean, if you don't have a garbage department and that money is being made off of garbage, where are you going to put it?
You have to go.
It's going to have to go to the general fund.
Well, there's still the garbage truck, right?
That's a good idea. Spend it in here.
Where are the garbage boxes? But you trapped them in the market. I think they don't build them half.
Yeah. Yeah.
But then according to raising the rates after three years, we currently pay Runkie now. What's happening, you all are raising their rates now? Nothing? You can raise them right now if you want to. And we have to raise ours to compensate for the, we charge now. So they say, we give up the contract. Not supposed to be. If you, if you control the process like you do water and sewer from start to finish and between the middle man, just makes sense. If you have our own city landfill, oh, maybe we can make all houses.
Just one thing I said, I'm going to say a lot, but you know, I said here, maybe we had a city auditor that said here, oh, everybody here is losing money. We all paid.
Nobody did.
Yes, he did. Who had another guy with the, an engineering firm with KU coming here, told me we was not losing money on garbage. I don't know where y'all getting.
It was the same time. You're wrong. About that also.
Chrissy and Terry, over the years, he's had, had, has the city ever pulled out of another department to pay for garbage? Has the city ever pulled out of another department to pay for garbage because garbage didn't come in? You know, as, garbage came in as a shortfall. Have we ever had to borrow from another department to pay because garbage didn't make any money?
Yes, you do when you're in a negative. The other utility funds have to compensate for their loss.
You would technically make it out of the reserve, which is technically garbage. It's just in like a holding account to guess, like equipment that went over budget. They paid for the equipment, I'm sure I wrapped up.
Uh, the reserve.
It's technically the same thing.
But we're operating in the negative from every single report you can pull. I have five years right in front of me. This is the budget we just passed. You say it's soft and we just passed the budget that is a 22,000 dollars loss. So it's, it's obviously pulling from another department. It has to. I'm not going to play English like I expected.
And then we've gone into all our expenses.
And the other thing that, that, there is a talk about that is the incurred expenses that we're going to have. And last meeting, it was told that we have over 120,000. And the auditors did 26, 30,000.
Yeah, split it out all your way out. There's a 200, 200. And that is what you only need. Let's find him late.
Please. You can just move back there. Hey, listen, here's a, here's a more question.
You really want to say? I guess my question.
Oh, I'm just here to answer questions. I mean, we're not, I'm not here to front some of you guys on this. I'm just here to explain what we did and.
No, I think that you didn't. Pretty simple.
I guess my question would be everybody out there, how many people want city garbage?
There's not a lot of people in here that really say that. There's people that elderly, that's like a posed out of face woman. Oh, I wasn't. I was sharing. None of the payoffs.
She's on the whole, I shared.
Yeah, but if they want to, why do they put it in the payoffs? To get a feel of what everybody's thoughts were, but on it. But have, it ended up, what happened to those people that didn't live in the city and just opened their mouth?
They went both sides. What happened was she thought the people were on her side. Put it out there.
No. And you tried to tell you, I had your side.
Hey, hey. Always going on an agent.
You're not acknowledging anybody here?
Yes, we are.
I'm sitting back here.
I'm doing a call back.
Can I know who's paid out the utility fund?
I'm sorry.
I just want to know who's paid out the utility fund? When we talk about having to move payroll, if we get rid of garbage, whose payroll are we moving out of that fund?
10,000 dollars for a bill. You got your salary paid. You have no salaries over there.
Are you talking about if we outsource it?
Correct.
So we're going to lose two employees? We, we won't be able to afford that.
Then you can pay them much better than the city and provide them with better benefits than the city can.
Well, we started at 11 for our contract. What does Runkie start out at?
Can you give me a bullet point start rate?
Well, I mean.
18 dollars per hour.
I was going to say. I'm, I'm just going to go ahead and say it, because if you call up there and tell me you want a job, then.
Well, I see, I keep seeing the sign that we got 27, we keep signing on those things. You guys are needing people on the job.
18 dollars per hour.
I wish we could all, we could pay as much as, pay our people that amount of money. If they're signing on those things.
Okay, tell them.
Sometimes I think a different thing, I'm just here.
Tell, tell them what they.
I don't know the budgets. That's not my department, that's yours. I mean, I can work here, yeah, because my job will go home. Sometimes I hate, sometimes not.
And he does a good job. All the garbage.
He's probably not my garbage man. He's a garbage man just standing there calls. I keep losing CDO customers. There are people in sound like you're trying to run a loan.
No, he's told me.
You have no money.
They always honest.
I ain't come here tonight, so I'm just trying to tell you. If you, if you offered more money, would, why don't you leave? You told them that.
He's come to me talking about this in the city. Don't, don't try to turn this on me and I can prove it. I wouldn't have this go to someone like that. He's come to me talking about how he's going to quit. And you're not respecting our way. Don't try to say that.
We're not going to talk about it. We're going to, we're just going to. Very good.
I guess it's, you know, you're loving the whole department, is it because it sound like, are they going to put in the water, the silver? Department, I mean, whoever, are you? She was asking a question.
What she was doing at this, she's talking about the city hall. Wonder where he's going.
I'm wondering again, who's paid out the utility fund? That was a simple question. And I was called by Sebastian. 10,000 dollars an employee, that's all we're paying employees out of utility fund? That's what I wanted to know.
For just the garbage, yes.
Okay, so what other payroll are we able to carry over from that fund?
That is it. It's the 10,000.
That's the only payroll.
Yes.
So where are we coming up with 30,000?
Out of the utility fund or the garbage fund?
No, it's the clerk's office.
We don't have the clerk's office department. The clerk, the city clerk's all paid.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, we do.
They're paid on the utility fund. Are you able to still be finding?
You have a clerk's department, you have a utility fund or a, or the clerk's department.
That's what we pay out of the city.
Utility fund.
It's a general fund.
So why are we paying our city clerk treasurer out of the utility fund and not out of the general fund?
Because I do utility work, I do both. And that's the way it's always been, because the general, general fund used to not support everybody and the utility fund did. Now it's starting to switch and utility funds having a harder time to do things. But we're getting ready to get rid of more revenue and that's why utility funds are starting to struggle.
But the way you've always done things, obviously you don't work. It's not working. I'm sorry?
I said there was never a problem, so.
28 years, we should have.
So I can put any questions you have. We can have a.
Right, look at our residents, look at our budgets for 28 years. The budget loss.
We're too focused on being a utility company and not focused on being a government. We don't talk about drugs, that's why we don't talk about business incentives. We don't discuss that. All you talk about is utility.
There's governmental approach and utility approach. We have to be one of the unusual ones that we are made of. But governmental, you're not really supposed to be making money under utility, either, or governmental. It's social services that, that people pay for. And you're not supposed to be making money off your tax payers.
But that's true. But the city treasurer and a city clerk that manages that fund has some interest in retaining that fund if her payroll's coming out of it.
Excuse me?
Certainly, that is absolutely, but.
There is no way if you continue with the utility.
Just more. Besides Chrissy out of, and if that would change somebody that. No, you don't have to blame anybody, bring anybody up here. That's not what we're here for. Well, there's more comments up here.
Right, we're talking about the garbage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hearing garbage.
Exactly. So I have, I have another question.
I'll let you know if you approve the bid for Runkie at twelve fifty and have the city make their. Put something.
So what the people want? They have them out here. I wanna know how many people want.
How many people here are gonna even say it?
Would you like my answer?
Sure, I would. I want everybody's input.
Let me, let me, let me ask, but let me ask for a show of hands. And I'm thinking about this from the standpoint of businesses and residents. How many people by a show of hands think that the Runkie personnel will cost less than the city?
Well, listen, you have to think about that, uh, bigger.
It's, it's something that, it's something that. I'm asking you, how many people think that the personnel cost would be less as a Runkie than it would using city personnel?
Personnel cost?
Personnel cost would not affect the city.
There is personnel.
How many people think that it would cost less for them to operate their equipment than it would for the city?
Because they have the.
How many people think that that the level of service would be greater than it would using in-house personnel? I, I'm gonna make another statement that Chrissy does an absolutely magnificent job.
Yes, she does.
Of getting the information into the system, okay? But I was still content, and this is not just for garbage, this is for water, sewer, electric, that you don't have the information presented in the proper format to really make the decisions that you need to make. You need to have a two-page profit-loss statement for each department. I tried to do that on a spreadsheet.
I completely agree. I have to.
Based on the information that I saw. But.
Because we need new systems for it then to work with.
Well, you don't, you don't know if you're buying water pumps for a dollar and seven for ninety-eight cents. I mean, you just don't, until you've got a true proper profit-loss statement, which should come out on no more than two pages for each department. Ron, I think you saw the information that I had. You're losing a money share in sewer.
Yep.
And electric.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we need.
You also have seen, you also have seen the ramifications if you lose some of your in-house personnel by virtue of the fact that if you don't have somebody in the city qualified to work on the electric, now you're gonna wait for two or three hours, if then, to get the power turned back on, because you're gonna have to bring in certified. So my argument is that, that regardless of what you say, it's not gonna cost any less, it's not gonna be any more economical for an outside agency who actually works for a profit. Okay, they're a for-profit company. And and say what you will, but mark my words, costs are gonna go up significantly before it's over.
Well, it's like I said, they're anywhere that is costing out. As far as, look at what they pay their employees. That's more economic opportunity that we're denying this isn't going to happen. Come work for us at twelve, you don't even get to go to Runkie on a choice. Well, they go one thousand for eighteen. Why not let them here?
You know, like, here's my thing. I see where employees doesn't stay.
Right.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't. And I see why they go to home. Because. But look at their turnover. It's their turnover. They have a lot of turnover. Why do you constantly hire them? Because they work in. They work on holidays. Because we can't keep employees. It's across the country. It's every day, no matter what.
Runkie drivers do not get to work on holidays if they do not want to, but there is holiday pay if they decide that they want to work them holidays. It is their choice to work them holidays. They are not told that they have to.
We have a motion on the floor. I have not heard a second.
And I haven't made my mind up until I talk to these people I'm hearing. So.
I would like to talk to you. I just have a statement uh to be made regarding uh the employees switching over from one to the other. It was not long ago, it might be a current ad in the paper now for employees needing to be brought into the city. And I believe it was the August uh city council meeting that um Gary was asking for two other people, which I have said previous times that those two people are already on the city payroll if we take garbage out of the loop of what city controls. Those same maintenance people, whatever you wanna classify them as, doesn't really matter. You can call them uh city employees just in general or what have you, but they're still working for the city at the capacity of a city employee. So they're not gonna be utilized in the garbage system if we switch to a Runkie uh process. Then there's the two people that Gary was asking for back two months ago in August. Those people are not gonna be losing jobs because they're already employed for the city. My question is, is that how can anybody think that having a middle person trying to do garbage would cost the city less than having the actual people that it ends up being, their responsibility to take care of garbage in the first place? We aren't garbage Kentucky, we're families. And it, you know, Runkie takes care of garbage. Families should take care of the people in families. There's a contract being offered at twelve fifty for three years. We don't have a contract here now for anything. If it was decided next month to raise our garbage and to raise our sewer and raise our electric.